Let me get my mic a little closer, sorry. Welcome to the regular meeting of Site County Board of Commissioners on October 19th, 2023. Commissioner McDaniel is in Charlotte, but she's planning to join us by video today. And also Commissioner Plyler is getting ready for some surgery next week, and he will join us remotely today also. In fact, we can check, I can see Commissioner Plyler, do we have Commissioner McDaniel?
He is joining right now.
Joining right now.
Good afternoon.
Very good, we can hear you, hear you Dave, thank you. We will begin our meeting today with an invocation from Kim Windham, Church of Christ of Latter-day Saints. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Woodbury. And please stand if you are able.
Our Heavenly Father, we're so grateful to come together this day, grateful for the service and love to our community and the citizens here that has been given by those who serve. We ask for thy guidance and love to come upon those who are here in service and those seeking for help in their needs. We ask a blessing on our community for their health and for the families of those who serve here today. We love thee and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kim, for being here today, starting us off, thank you. Citizens who are interested in participating in the public session portion of the meeting, you may do that remotely by calling 336-422-1200, 336-422-1200. And you'll be placed on hold until we get to the public session, which should not be too long. And members of the audience who are here that are interested in speaking during the public portion of the meeting, you need to have filled out a speaker card, but if you haven't, you could do it right now, they're outside on the little credenza, and you can return it to our clerk at the end of the deus. First item on the agenda is a resolution and ordinance to approve a crisis-initiated supplemental night shift differential for our detention staff. We've briefed this twice, do we have a motion?
We have approval.
Second. Have a motion by Vice Chair Wissenhut, second by Commissioner Bessie, in discussion.
I do have a question, and maybe this is to the county manager as it relates to the issue around the salary of our detention officers, regardless of this issue, that's a crisis. And I'm kind of confused of where we sort of left off with that issue. Maybe there was the, that was the vote where Commissioner Plyler wasn't here, and so we've been talking to staff about how to restructure that and bring it back, but I just want to provide clarity for the community and just to myself as it relates to where we are with that.
From the management perspective, unless the board directs me to bring back a matter in front of the board that's been voted one way or another, I would never bring it back on my own. That's just pure management and policy. And so I would need board direction, you know, I'm never going to second guess the decision of the Board of County Commissioners, and that was voted on. If you wish for it to come back, it'll need to come back through a commissioner.
Thank you.
All righty, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, could you please identify the commissioners who are participating remotely and have them check in?
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry. Commissioner McDaniel.
Greetings, sir, I am here present.
And could you, are you voting on the, on the pay differential, the night pay differential for detention officers, yea or nay?
That is a yes, sir.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Plyler?
He's left.
Whoop, we just lost, we just lost his picture. Oh, well, his picture disappeared too. Well, I'd say at this point, we have, it's, we have, it's a vote of six to zero, six to zero at this moment. All right. Second item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the meeting of September 21st and October 5th, 2023. Do we have a motion?
We have approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Wissenhut, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. And Commissioner McDaniel?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any calls or cards for the public session?
Mr. Chairman, we don't have any calls, but we have five speaker cards.
Okay, thank you. And let me just say as a reminder to our speakers, I do, I do have a timer, which I'll set, and we have three minutes, and if you'll finish, if you get to that, I'll give you, I'm not going to interrupt you, but I may give you a high sign to wrap it up after three minutes, so we're ready.
Our first speaker is Cindy Woods, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I vote in favor of the resolution.
We see that you're back, thank you, Commissioner Plyler.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cindy Woods, and my address is 4147 Gray Tuck Drive, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I would like to first thank the committee for hearing us about our sandblasting issue in, in our area, and actively seeking a potential resolution for the community issue that it's causing. With the sandblasting issue, the droning noise has been presented to the committee, and you've been able to hear a sample of that last week. Please know that the noise is far more reaching than just the adjacent residential area. But another serious issue also exists, and that's the huge plume of dust that is created when they sandblast in the open air outside. Hopefully, you've seen the photo from our petition, it shows the huge cloud that comes up directly over the property. These particles are blown throughout the adjoining residences, it's, it's, it's on our property, it's in our homes, our carpet, it's in our furniture, cabinets, it's everywhere. I do not know what media that Piedmont Crane uses as doing research, it could be anything, could be aluminum oxide, silica sand, crushed glass grit, walnut shells, and the list goes on. But I can tell you that their employees are in full gear, full bodysuit gear with a respirator when they're doing the sandblasting, so. And yet, we're, we're living with it in our residence, we're breathing it and most likely ingesting it because it is such a fine dust that floats around, gets into every small space within our home, and I brought an example, actually some examples, so you could kind of get an idea of what we're dealing with. This is what comes out of my vacuum cleaner, and can you see all the powder? And this is a 10-day period of time, so I didn't collect this over months and months, I have the dates on each bag. It gets into the carpet and it's hard to get out. Luckily for us, I thought when we bought new carpeting, we have a latex pad underneath it, so dust particles and debris don't sink below the carpet itself, it stops there, it doesn't go into the carpet backing or into the pad. Not a good idea for us because this is stuck in our carpet. And I brought a Swiffer, I was kind, I didn't do baseboards or, or all the chair rolling in my home, but this is just an example of what sits, sits in our house. You need to know that this is, I need to know what this is, honestly. It's in my house, I'm breathing it, it's on my property, it's hard to get out, I really need to know what they're using, and I would love it if they would stop. I want the committee to know that this is interfering with our daily life because this is what we're living with. And I appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Murray, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, my name's Christopher Murray, I live at 3312 Stacy Court in Winston-Salem, 27107. Also, to speak about the sandblasting, the noise, for sure, for, for where I live, is a problem, you can't go outside hardly and not hear it, you know, and just to reiterate, you know, all the things, I know you've already heard, I'm not going to take a whole three minutes, but what I, what I would say is that, you know, it, it is, it's created a nuisance for our community, it's, it's in an area that I feel like, and I think others feel like, it shouldn't be located there. It is, so we would like to find some sort of mutual resolution. But my concern as a property owner there is the, the value drag on my property that this could cause. If I decide to put my house up for sale today, someone came to look at it, and they happen to be out there sandblasting, I think that would definitely put a question in someone's mind about, well, do I want to live near this? And, you know, I, I wasn't really given a choice when this was, was proposed and this company moved in. We went to an open house that they hosted at the location before they built their whole facility, there was another building there, and we went and spoke, and I know some of the other neighbors on Gray Tuck who are more impacted certainly than I am. You know, we all asked, will any of this work be done outdoors? And we were told directly that it would not, no work would be done outdoors, is what we were told by the owner, and his lawyer was there while this was discussed. So we took him at face value, and, you know, I feel like he was not quite honest about the whole situation. So just, you know, again, thank you all for your time, listening to everyone's concern and, and giving us a voice, thank you.
Thank you.
John Woods, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Afternoon, my name is John Woods, I live at 4147 Gray Tuck Drive, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. We live, me and my wife live about 300, 400 feet behind Piedmont Hoist and Crane, okay? These are the air filters, I change them since 2019, change them twice every month, this is 30 days, and I have two, okay? They're wearing respirators, what do we, what do we inhale, and I mean, you saw the dust that my wife had, and the noise. There was a gentleman out there named Stephen Berry, office is over there, he was taking decibel readings for the noise, and I walked over and he gave me his card, and I asked him while the noise was going on, I said, if my house was for sale, would you look at it? And he said, not a chance. So with that in mind, I called a friend of mine who is a realtor, she came out when it was, when it was, when they were blasting, and she said that she would get back with me, and two days later, she told me that her company would not list my house. And she said that I probably would not get the same for my house because of the disclosure. All these houses, all these people that want to sell their house, they're going to have to give a noise disclosure, or they're going to have lawsuits. And that is, you know, I'm retired, I didn't want to come and do this, this is not how I wanted to plan my retirement. So I just want to give you, tell you thanks, given you the opportunity, talk to you.
Thank you.
Jackie Seebolt, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jackie Seebolt, I live at 4153 Gray Tuck Drive in Winston-Salem. I'm one of the 100-plus people who signed the petition to stop the outside sandblasting at Piedmont Hoist and Crane, which, like Mr. Woods, I'm right beside them, they're about 300, 400 feet in front of my home. Since I last spoke at the October 9th meeting, the sandblasting has been loud and it has been continuous, begins early in the morning, and it continues into the afternoon with what I guess is just a break where they stop for lunch. And I just want to emphasize to each of you that I and other residents have been in continuous contact with County Manager Watts and others since this issue began in 2019. Manager Watts has worked with us, I and others attended a meeting with Commissioner Martin, we also attended another meeting with Commissioner Bessie, and this was all about the sandblasting. And we worked for months with the specialist from the Environmental Department, who can attest to how loud and disturbing the noise is. And I only say these things because, even though we are just now speaking publicly at board meetings about this situation, we've been speaking behind the scenes to county leaders and others for a very long time, trying to reach a solution to this problem. And when this property was originally zoned GI in 2012, it was for Caterpillar, and they only stored axles on the property where Piedmont Hoist and Crane is now. Of course, the property still remains a zone GI, manufacturing C, and Caterpillar is also zoned, manufacturing CGI, and they do, still to this day, they do no outside sand, no outside manufacturing. And Caterpillar, I feel, is a reputable company that respects the residents who live near them, including the ones right across the street on Union Cross Road, and they should be the example of what Piedmont Hoist and Crane is made to follow. Again, I'm just asking for your help, and I hope that you'll have this company do what they said, and that they'll take their sandblasting into an enclosed building, or that you will revoke that permit. I believe you have the authority to do that, based on the North Carolina General Statute 160-403, which reads that a local government can revoke a development or approval for any substantial departure from the approved application plans or specifications, or you can revoke it based on false statements or misrepresentations made in securing the approval. I see this as a clear error because I don't believe any one of you or any member of the planning board would have voted to approve this company's original permit request if you had known their true intent, which was to conduct outside industrial sandblasting on that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker card is Keith Mahaffey, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Keith Mahaffey, and I live at 3320 Stacy Court, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and I appreciate, again, the opportunity to come and speak today publicly. To begin with, I want to thank the board for allowing a respected clergy person or a community member to open these meetings with prayer. Hopefully, this sets the right tone and is the foundation for information discussed at our commissioners' meetings, and that the information brought forth would be truthful, complete, and above board. I also want to thank everyone here for allowing the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm especially grateful for the last words that read, "with liberty and justice for all," because that is the main reason we are here today, seeking justice for our situation. And we hope that these time-honored traditions will always be a part of these official proceedings. Now I would like to read from the official script that is read by the Board of Commissioners before every single public hearing and special use zoning requests brought before the commissioners for consideration. And that includes the special use zoning requests that Piedmont Hoist and Crane made during a public hearing pertaining to the case we're here talking about today. And County Attorney Watkins was kind enough back in 2022 when we spoke to send me this transcript that is read before the commissioners' meetings. It reads as follows. Prior to review and conducting a public hearing, I would like to read the following procedures for special use zoning matters. If the petitioner, which in this case it's Piedmont Hoist and Crane, it says right here, this is what was read, if the petitioner elects to petition for special use district zoning, the petition must specify the actual use intended for the property, I'm going to read that again, the petition, the petition must specify the actual use intended for the property. And the Board of Commissioners will approve or disapprove the petition on the basis of the specific use requested. Not only did this company mislead and fail to communicate their intentions for the property, and that includes, like Chris said, from the beginning, public meetings with the citizens all the way through their special use zoning petition hearing, but they went one step further. They commuted, communicated to the city-county planning department that all operations would be done inside. Let me, let me read the following quote from the planning director, and this is a portion from the video of the commissioners' meetings pertaining to Piedmont Hoist and Crane that, that County Manager Watts graciously shared with us back a few years ago. The quote reads as follows. This is the proposed site plan and the amendment that we're here for. It contemplates about 40,000 square feet of manufacturing A use under roof for Piedmont Hoist and Crane. All operations will take place inside the proposed building. That's, that's a quote, a direct quote from a past commissioners' meeting. And it also states more than once in the video that, quote, "the proposed site plan would not add any new uses." These procedures that were just read are pretty straightforward, especially to the common folk that are not versed in all of this planning stuff. When you come before the county and this board requesting approval for a special use zoning permit, you have to tell the truth about your business operations and intentions for now and in the future. We have more evidence to show that this company obtained their permitting and approval from the county and the citizens under false pretenses, and that is where people do not know the truth about your intentions. When procedures, et cetera, are manipulated this way and are allowed to stand, then it diminishes credibility of the county and the authority of this board. I hope you will take to heart each of the 100-plus people who signed petitions that were presented two weeks ago, and their request to stop the loud and ongoing noise, and to be able to enjoy our homes and property without concerns and worries that disturb our lives and is detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of any individual and the peace and dignity of the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. For the five of you that spoke today, I can, in fact, I've shared this on the telephone with Mr. Mahaffey, actually, after the media coverage, I guess it was two weeks ago, actually, actually, I received a call- I received a call from the CEO of Piedmont Hoisting Crane. And he had, he'd like to meet, which we did meet, in fact, we met a week ago Tuesday. And thought we had, it, there's, I will say that in that conversation, he certainly said, I, we, they would like to be good neighbors and that actually we have talked about it, that there may be some movement on their part to begin to do, to remediate in some way. We actually talked about some other visits that some of our staff and the Winston-Salem Business, Inc. staff came to talk to them on some potential economic development improvement kind of issues that could actually help resolve this issue. And that's where, and, and he said he would be very happy to entertain that conversation again. So at least there seemed to be some willingness to listen and to attempt to respond. And he did, he did talk about their seasonal work. He did mention they had just started back on a, on a, on a large project and that's exactly what's going on every day. And they have had times when that kind of work they were, they did not have going on. But, so he described a lot of their, their, sort of their business, you know, enterprise and actions. And I feel confident that the issue of material that, that you all have shared, I'm sure they, I'm sure they have some idea what that is and what its penetration rate is. I mean, our environmental folks have been out and I'm sure that's, that, that can certainly be, you ask the question, what is it? I'm sure that question can be answered. So there is an ongoing possibility of, of some improvement of what the options can be. And we certainly share your pain in this endeavor during the time. And really, I, I won't, I won't even, I can't explain the complexities of the, of the, it's been, it's been discussed a time or two about what actually happened in terms of the permitting issue. But the, but it, no one has designed, including Piedmont Hoisting Crane, that when they spoke originally, they acknowledged that they did say they were going to, it was not going to be outside manufacturing. But they have since, their company has changed. They've now, they've now consolidated another location. I mean, they've consolidated another location and their work product has now gone up. But at least, I think, I don't know all that, I'm just, I don't, I'm not going to speak to what I don't know. So I'll be quiet on that. But at least there is some effort, I think, to want to be, the word, the word was used to be a good neighbor. So that's important and I, he certainly expressed an openness to visit with people and would want to do that. So we will certainly stay on top of that and be happy to hear from you at any time. And if, obviously there's no movement, we'll see if there's a plan B. And County Manager Watts was with, was with me, we met here, and if he wants to add anything, kind of covered that. All right, we're good. All righty. But thank you for coming and thank you for sharing and we are, we do, we do feel your pain.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask the attorney a question? If these folks have admitted that they actually spoke wrong about what they were going to do and, and we believed them when we voted for this, that there would not be any outside sandblasting, for the life of me, I can't understand why we cannot revoke that permit. I, I didn't vote for them to do sandblasting outside.
I understand your frustration with that and that's something we can certainly look into, understand that the Department of Environmental Affairs is, you know, looking into the issue. So we will definitely keep you informed on that.
Thank you.
Would you want to expand the enclosed session motion to, to date, to answer that question, Gordon?
Commissioner Bessie.
Yes, this may be a more appropriate question for a closed session if that, in fact, is added to today's session. But at some point, I would appreciate an update on the exploration of a enforcement action regarding the narrative standard on the noise ordinance.
All right. Mr. County Manager, we are now ready to continue the remainder of the agenda.
All right. We do have some business items for consideration this afternoon. We have reviewed these in briefing sessions and have hopefully answered all the, all the questions related to them. So I'll go ahead and dive into it. You've got two budget and finance items. Item four is an amendment to the fiscal year 2023/2024 budget. It appropriates $775,282 from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services for agreement addenda 546. It's the Communicable Disease Pandemic Recovery Fund for those services.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner McDaniel.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. All right. Very good.
Aye.
We got it. Thank you.
Agenda item five is an amendment to the fiscal year 2023/2024 budget ordinance that appropriates funds to the Forsyth County Department of Social Services for hiring 22 new positions for Medicaid expansion. The Medicaid enrollment's currently around 112,000. Medicaid expansion is going to increase that by about $45,000. The cost of these positions about is approximately $1,429,292. The county cost, because of the way their cost share is, in place is $439,642. And we are evaluating whether or not the state's going to come back in and backfill that.
Move approval.
We have most of, we have, I'll, I'll take, since, because of the delay, Commissioner Plyler, Commissioner Bessie will be the motion and I'll have you as the second. Commissioner Plyler, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner McDaniel.
All right. I have one grant matter. It's, item six is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a direct award of grant funds from the United States Environmental Protection Agency for the purchase of air pollution monitoring equipment from Teledyne API, under an exception to the bidding laws codified in Forsyth County federal procurement. The policy's noted there. The amount, which is all grant dollars, is $52,019.
Move approval.
Have a motion by Commissioner Plyler to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizinut. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner McDaniel.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
We have a number of contractual matters. Item seven is a resolution authorizing a contract for the purchase of 80 Chromebooks to provide ongoing computer literacy training in branch locations. It was competitively bid. The lowest bidder is Brooks Network Services LLC in the amount not to exceed $62,075.
We have a motion.
Move approval.
This is approved by Commissioner Plyler.
Move approval.
Is there a second? I'll be happy to second that. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner McDaniel.
Aye. Aye.
All righty. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item eight is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract between Forsyth County and McNaulson, a division of Brodart Company, to provide public library with leased books. This is in the amount not to exceed $236,577.24.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner McDaniel.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item nine is a resolution authorizing the Forsyth County manager to approve change orders for the inter-agency communications 800 megahertz system replacement project. As you know, that project's been going on a long time and is coming to completion. At the end of it, there are some adds to, to make there. The total change order authorized would not to, be not to exceed $685,913. That is partly offset with, with funds from the city of Winston-Salem. County cost $426,497.
Move approval.
Motion approved. Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut and a second by Commissioner Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner McDaniel.
Aye. Aye.
Good. My motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of pharmaceuticals by Forsyth County Pharmacy. Obviously, that's a big part of this business, purchase through Cardinal as the provider in an amount not to exceed 3.4 million for brand and generics and $100,000 for over-the-counter medications.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut. Second, as I heard from Commissioner Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner McDaniel.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item 11 is a resolution awarding and authorizing the execution of a contract for the purchase of equipment to upfit Dodge Chargers. It was actually previously approved. This just recognizes the freight charges of not to exceed $4,500.
I'll make a motion to.
Move approval.
Second by Commissioner Plyler. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner McDaniel.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And the last contractual item is item 12, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for automobile accident-related repair services with multiple providers, really to allow us kind of a blanket pre, purchase order or approval, approve, approval in an amount not to exceed $375,000.
Move approval.
Move approval.
Post-approved by Commissioner Wizinut, by Vice Chair Wizinut, and second by Commissioner Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner McDaniel.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
I'm sorry. We've got some property matters. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing acceptance of $210,000 from North Carolina Department of Transportation in donation of a .707 acre portion of county-owned real property located at 400 West Haynes Mill Road to North Carolina Department of Transportation. I am pleased to, to say that that check has been received, I believe.
Kirby?
Yes, it has been received. And so, and, and just taking a look at it, it does appear that they, the state had used some historic preservation funds for that, which might explain the uniqueness of this particular transaction, so.
You sure that they want some more land?
Move approval.
Right, 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 right.
Is there a motion?
Dave did.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. But got you. Commissioner Plyler, motion.
I second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizinut. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner McDaniel.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item 14 is a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and Wake Forest University Health Sciences for lease of county-owned property at 3325 Solace Creek Parkway. This is the old Amos Cottage property. Lots of discussion over a period of time, their, the, their need basically to retain access to that property as they move that facility to some other places. They needed it for a two-year period. After a lot of conversation and frankly, good board leadership around a market rate lease, they agreed to. We, we do present this lease in the amount of, it's a two-year lease, $8 square foot, $294,320 a year.
Move approval.
Got a motion from Vice Chair Wizinut and also have a second from Commissioner Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner McDaniel. Commissioner Urban.
Aye.
Thank you. Very good. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 15 is a resolution authorizing the execution of an art loan agreement for the loan of stained glass, a stained glass panel that's currently at the Smith Reynolds Airport Terminal to Muse Winston-Salem. That was actually constructed in 1962.
I'll, I'll make a motion. Will you approve that?
Move approval.
Second by Commissioner Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner McDaniel.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we have two appointments. Vice Chair, do you want to take those or do you want me to take a whack at them?
I'll hand, I will do this. We have the Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission. We have one appointment for a four-year term and our citizens wishing to serve is Seth Gatto, John Hannah, Nan Harper, Janeway, and Bryce Sherburne.
Mr. Chairman, since we have two commissioners who are participating remotely, they will need to say who their vote is for.
Commissioner Plyler.
Yes, Janeway. And I can't think of the name of the man.
So you, you're voting for Janeway? We have, we, I'll tell you, the four people were, well, actually, my ballot is in, but it was John Hannah, Janeway, Gatto.
That's it. Hannah is the one I'm on.
Sherburne.
And Sherburne. So could you vote for one of those, please? Could not hear you, sorry.
Hannah.
Oh, Hannah. Got it. Okay, thank you. Commissioner McDaniel.
Yes, to be clear, could you please share with me who was the incumbent here or previously served?
The incumbents wishing to serve are Seth Gatto, John Hannah, Nan Harper, and Bryce Sherburne.
Okay, Bryce Sherburne, please, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. I just couldn't remember. I don't have my paperwork in front of me. Thank you.
And, did you tell us your vote? She did, I'm sorry.
Yes, I said Bryce.
I was distracted on the next sheet. Thank you.
Don't worry.
I'd already made four. I had already made four.
I know, I did. You got it.
Mr. Chairman, John Hannah received four votes, Nan Harper, Janeway received one vote, and Bryce Sherburne received two votes.
Thank you very much.
Our next is the zoning board of adjustment for Forsyth County. We have one incumbent wishing to serve, Philip Rector, and the citizens wishing to serve is Richard Baraki, Alfred Mitchell, and Gregory Harrison. And you may vote for two.
And I assume the other two become alternate, alternate members.
Mr. Chairman, if that's what you wish to do, you can do that.
You are saying that, which two for the regular members and which two for the alternate?
You just vote for the, just vote for the, the two you vote for will be the regular members. And the two that do not receive majority will end up being the, would be the alternate members.
And Mr. Chairman, could you please make a motion to that effect after the vote is announced?
I can, I can do that. And by the way, do, our, Commissioner Plyler? Did you hear the?
Yes.
Could you, could you cast, there are two votes to cast.
Yes, understand. I don't have a list of the names in front of me, but I know who I want to vote for.
All right.
Well, good for you, Dave. If you could repeat the alternate names for me again, please, Chairman or Vice Chair.
Well, let me just say, let me interrupt you one second. Commissioner Dan. Commissioner McDaniel? Commissioner McDaniel, can you hear me?
I can.
Good. I, I confuse the issue. I simply, I will, after we're through voting, I will make a motion that the two people who did not receive, did not receive a majority vote, become the alternate members. So you're voting for the members, period. You're not voting for alternates, voting for the members.
Period, okay.
Voting for two people.
All right, thank you.
I apologize for that. So, and if we need to read to get the names again, we can do that.
Do you need me to read the name? Pardon? Okay, the incumbent, incumbent wishing to serve is Philip Rector. The citizens wishing to serve is Richard Baraki, Gregory Harrison, and Alfred Mitchell. So choose two. You may vote for two, Dave.
Well, Rector is one, Mitchell is two.
Do you get it, Madam? Clerk, thank you. And, and Commissioner McDaniel?
Yes, so the incumbent, Philip, and Richard, and Gregory.
Got it?
If I got that right. If I got that right.
Did you understand who Commissioner McDaniel voted for?
Madam Clerk, did you, she understood.
Okay.
I figured she's tallying, I didn't understand, she's tallying.
Mr. Chairman, Philip Rector received five votes, Richard Baraki received four votes, Alfred Mitchell received two votes, and Gregory Hairston received three votes.
I'd like to make a motion that Gregory Hairston and Alfred Mitchell become the alternate members of the zoning board of adjustment.
Second.
Second.
Second, the motion.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This time, I need you to vote, Commissioner Plyler, yea or nay?
Yes.
Okay, and...
Yea.
Okay. Did you say yea, yea? A, yes?
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner McDaniel?
She said yes.
I'm sorry, thank you, we heard you.
Aye.
I apologize. Motion carries unanimously.
The next is the zoning board of adjustment in Winston-Salem. We had two appointments. We did not have any applicants, so I move that this be continued to a future meeting.
Second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Plyler, we're going to re-advertise, yes?
Aye.
Aye for Commissioner McDaniel. Aye for Commissioner Plyler. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, do you need anything else on that? Are we good? Okay, very good. You have three reports. You've got the September 2023 Contribution-Based Benefit Cap Report. Item 19, the North Carolina Community College System Capital Improvement Project Approval for the Learning Commons. And just for the new commissioners particularly, one of the things that North Carolina State Construction Office requires for both the K-12 school system and the community college is when, when they build a project, there's sort of a commitment for the county to continue to pay the statutory required maintenance cost, and that's, when you look at that report, that's what they are reporting that that might be. And so that is something they require county managers to sign. I've always, in my career, wanted to make sure that the board saw that, had a chance to take a look at it, so nobody's surprised as we move back through. I mean, obviously, this, this board has a lot of investment in that project anyway, and so obviously, we would be supportive of that, I believe, but I wanted to let you know that. And then finally, the Rogers Realty and Auction Sold Asset Report from the most recent auction.
Have a motion to accept the reports?
Motion to accept the report.
Motion approved by Commissioner Linville, second by Commissioner Plyler. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, I heard for both, both Commissioner Plyler and Commissioner McDaniel.
Aye, yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Reports are done. I have one comment before we adjourn. On Tuesday, in fact, the pictures are in the Winston-Salem Journal today, but it was an event held on Tuesday that was a part of a workforce development ARPA grant, one of the American Rescue Plan Act grants, actually to bring together every eighth grader in the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools and every high school sophomore in the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, basically to be exposed to world of work and actually meet employers. And there were 70 businesses of various sorts, employers, at the Coliseum, and I had the pleasure to be there for a couple hours. Commissioner Wisethunt was there for a couple hours, and to watch middle schoolers going through, on the bottom part, the picture in the journal is of, of middle schoolers actually laying concrete block, which is, and having a machine to carry the blocks and load them, put the mortar, do a block or two, and, and kids getting to touch that and do that. And there were a whole lot of other great activities and questions as kids went through that. And I did get a little personal feedback from my granddaughter, who said that it was a worthwhile day, and that she was able to visit a good many folks and ask questions, and so that was, that was an on-the-ground evaluation of one, but I thought it was a good day, and maybe Commissioner Wisethunt may want to comment.
I would. I just thought it was one of the greatest days that I've seen as a commissioner. I was so happy to see so many businesses there talking to these young folks, and there was some socializing, but there was some curiosity also, and it was fun. But what I wanted to point out, for one thing, was Frank L. Bloom, they're celebrating their 100th anniversary, and so Mike Lancaster, the president, went to all the employees and said, "We have $35,000 that we want to give a donation to the community, and I'd like for you all, the employees, to choose where the $35,000 goes." And the employees chose this World of Work Day, and I thought that spoke volumes for his, his employees and for the company that is celebrating their 100th birthday. But it was a great, great day, and I hope it will not be the last. I hope it will turn into an annual event. It really was great for our eighth graders and the high school kids.
And there were a lot of people that worked on that, staff-wise, but I do want to think of Mark Owens from the Greater Winston-Salem, Inc., and Kyle Heaney from here also, so...
And Andrea Sheets also.
And Andrew was there.
Yes, she was.
On the ground, boots on the ground there, the whole day.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McDaniel has her hand up.
Sorry, go ahead.
No worries. I know that we're getting ready to conclude, but I wanted, a point of privilege before we concluded today, to wish Wake Forest and Winston-Salem State University a happy homecoming in my absence. So, thank you for allowing me to share that.
All righty. Message conveyed. There you go. All righty, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Vice Chair.
So moved.
And second by Commissioner Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Get votes on that. Very good. All right. Do we need a minute or two before we go to the briefing, or are we ready?
Let's take five minutes, can we?
Take, take, we'll take a five-minute break, we'll come back for a review of the October 9th, of the, actually, November 2nd items in our briefing for next week. briefing for next week.